Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any apologies?
Your worship, I've had apologies from Somerset councillor Hart owing to illness, but she has provided me with a written update that I'll circulate to councillors after the meeting.
Thank you.
Councillor Dougal sent her apologies.
Okay. Thank you. Any declarations of interest that are not already in the disclosable interest register? Okay. To approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record?
I believe they were circulated in advance, your worship, but I'm just, the projector is just warming up and they should go to board in just a second. I don't believe that Katie had any particular queries before the meeting to make any amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Without the letter to the CPS providing what's going on where you crop serious crimes going unpunished, policies and procedures not being followed by CPS allowing things the most serious of crimes. These people walking among us, people are scared, people acting different, right here. Without that letter, right, you're enabling the what's going on.
Thank you.
For my last comment. I wish you all a pleasant evening in your privileged lovely lives.
Any comments on page nineteen? Page twenty, thank you.
And you just, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, afternoon. It's not right now.
Page twenty-one. Page twenty-two. Page twenty-three. Page twenty-four. And page twenty-five. Can I accept these as a true record of the August meeting? I will suffice. Thank you. Do you have a copy for me to sign as well? Okay, next item is, oh, um.
Uh, yes, councillor Napper.
Thank you, your worship. Just one item, back on Planning Committee, which I'm not on. B, propose, sorry, A, repair of reconstruction of retaining wall land above town. Is this the, um, is this the footpath which has been under scrutiny for the last five years?
No, we did that about the month before, I think. Sorry, Jack. This is the, this is the wall as, uh, on the actual road, as the road bends to go to Wimble Hill, if I remember correctly.
Ah, I know, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In five years' time.
Okay. An update on actions from the last meeting.
I wasn't present at the last meeting, your worship.
Okay.
So the Assistant Town Clerk is going to give you an update on actions from the last meeting.
Oh, thank you.
The actions from the last meeting were about the weathering and wonder about the content there. Everybody should have received them in time and I believe the mayor is going to have to explain the next one immediately.
Yes, I will. And to note the latest crime statistics report.
Give me a second, your worship, again, out of practice. It was circulated as a link in advance of the meeting, but let me find it as well.
Oh, yeah. Councillor Henderson.
Well, just to say, I note there's an increase from May to June, but, you know, that may not be a bad thing if our new policing policy is taking effect. So it's a shame we can't have a policeman here to talk about it.
Yeah, I, I, I have noticed that the, there's three new initiatives in place. So there's increased presence on the high street, the neighbourhood, uh, neighbourhood policing guarantee framework, and then also the hotspots, and so that is making a difference, so we do see more police. Councillor Napper.
Thank you, your worship. I note that crime is up and I note that police officers are down. Um, and only today and yesterday, uh, there appears not, not a no-go area, that's not correct, but it's an uneasy area in the marketplace. And I just hope that we can get a few more police officers, whereby the PCFOs or whatever, to, um, to come along and, um, and walk the streets of Glastonbury.
They have been, they have been.
Yeah, but not enough, right? Because the people are feeling very, very, very uneasy. And I witnessed it myself yesterday.
Okay.
Not, not good.
Thank you. Councillor Osborne?
Yeah, there are more police, there was loads the other day. There was like, they were like wildebeest on the tundra, coming down the high street with their tasers. My God, you know, it, the coup has happened. But what it was, was apparently our MP was in town having a photo opportunity in this very room. I've never seen so many of Avon and Somerset's finest in one place.
Thank you.
Um, today, there was a fight that went on for about thirty minutes.
Yeah, I was just told about it this evening.
No police.
Glastonbury needs to get a grip.
Councillor Mutch.
I have to admit, I get confused by things and I've joined the Anti-Crime Committee. I've been to a couple of meetings and I still can't get my head around why we can't have a drinking ban on the high street. This may be my fault, it probably is, but it's what everybody says to me almost every day, especially when there are people like, like Carrie's referred to today, I saw them yesterday and you could see the uneasiness on people's faces sitting outside, sitting outside, he's having a cup of coffee and one of them's got a music box going and playing pretty bad music to make things worse. And, and beer cans rolling about on the pavement. And it's just, it might, I don't think it's as bad as it was perhaps earlier in the summer, but it's still too bad. And I, if anybody can help me out, why we cannot have a drinking ban? Because I, I just run out of what, what to say to people when they ask me the same question.
I can answer that.
Oh, great.
There was a drinking ban under a PSPO that we had in this town. That PSPO ran out and Somerset decided in their infinite wisdom that they'd have the same PSPO for all the areas. And none of the others had a drinking problem like we have. So the drinking bit of it was taken out. So that's what happened. And we have actually as a town council at the meeting that Susie Hart addressed, it wasn't at the town council, it was at the, um, crime reduction thingy, put forward a motion asking for that to be reinstated. And I think it came actually up to this full council a couple of meetings ago to send it again to Somerset to say, this town has a particular need to have that in its, well, effectively its bylaws.
Inspector Rachel Clarke is working on that, I saw her a week before last. Councillor Roney McDougal.
Yes, so that, coming at it from a slightly different point of view, we used to have a wonderful person called David Beach.
Yes.
And David Beach was somebody who could actually be with what were loosely called the benches and could actually make sure that they got too out of order. He was brilliant, absolutely brilliant. Merlin was pretty good too, in a slightly different way. Sadly, both of them have died and we need somebody who is of that community, who will take that sort of responsibility that people like David Beach took and made sure that nobody got too far out of order. Now, admittedly, at that time, we did have the PSPO against alcohol, um, so that made it easier. But, but even so, I'm very aware that we have lost two key members of our community who did a wonderful service for us all.
Thank you.
And I don't know what we can do about it. I mean, I, I really heard DJ, he was talking about this very problem. Um, and he's part of that community and they are feeling that they are being attacked and slandered because of this problem and it's nothing to do with their community, it's, it's some other people.
Yeah.
And I'm not too sure how we address it without actually recreating another David Beach.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Henderson?
Councillor Cousins has been.
Councillor Cousins.
Thank you, your worship. At one of the, the recent meetings, not too long ago anyway, of the Town Centre Crime Reduction Committee, I did pose the question whether or not a parish council has the capacity to introduce a public space protection order. I know this has been done by district council, et cetera, and I wondered whether anybody had followed that inquiry.
Oh.
You got the answer to that?
Yeah, I'm got the answer to that. But we, um, we had a meeting here with the MP and the Police and Crime Commissioner a while back. There was tables right away down there, we were surrounded by local businesspeople and that, and Sergeant Simon Lancy was there as well. And that night, it was unanimously agreed that everybody wanted this, um, drinks ban or PSPO with a drinks ban enforced. And Simon went away and said he would get it sorted. I mean, I assume it's happening, but it seems to take forever and I agree with everybody here that we need it, everybody wants it and we're all, you know, baffled as to why it's taking so long. With regard to Dave Beach, I mean, I love Dave to bits, he was a great guy and, but yesterday morning or yesterday day, there was drinking going on from about ten AM. There was about half dozen guys, I didn't really recognise any of them, they were all, from what I would say, outsiders. And you could just tell where, where this was heading and as they went on, they got more and more drunk, more and more leery, started play fighting, had their shirts off. And I phoned it in and it asked the question, well, is, is anything happening now? I said, no, but give it time and it will, something's gonna happen. And, and, you know, nothing police-wise happened, you know, I mean, I left work at five o'clock, they were still there. I don't know if anything happened in the evening or whether it was something to do with what happened today, but I really do wanna back with police, you know. When we have these tea, uh, town centre meetings and when we have the, the meetings with the MP, the police are at the front end and they really try, or the seamless really try hard. But whenever they say we've got more feet on the ground and we've got extra PSPOs coming through and we've got special councils and all this, we all build our hopes up and then nothing seems to happen or very, or visibly, nothing seems to happen. So, um, I think all we can do is just keep pressurising, keep saying we still want more, you know, as a council, as, as residents of the town, put pressure on, keep phoning in any incidents, because that makes a lot of difference. And I think with all of us pushing, you know, at some point, we will get what we want.
Yes, thank you. Councillor Kirk?
Thank you. Councillor White. Um, this is, it's been an ongoing situation as far as I can remember from when I first set foot in this town in nineteen ninety. It, it, it goes in waves as the young'uns grow up and come out of school and they're looking for something to do and they end up in pubs, et cetera, et cetera, end up fighting. They go to a boxing club, for instance, or whatever. Um, that usually tones them down, doesn't it? But, um, it's incessant, it's a cycle and we're in another bad cycle of it, yet again. Um, it might last, this might go away in about a year, two years. Then give it a break, you know, as these guys get older, then they start telling the new young'uns coming out to behave. So it will end, it will, it will gradually phase out. But the, the worrying aspect is, um, if this is what you're saying with this group, yesterday came from elsewhere into town, then that is a problem, because this is what happened with the Licensing Act in two thousand and three, started, we started getting people in town who'd never seen before, causing, getting absolutely wrecked, buying bottles of booze. The supermarkets have got a hell of a lot to answer for, for this alone. Um, because even drug dealers, dealers were telling me that they get more money selling booze. They literally just go into the supermarket, buy a bottle for twenty quid or whatever and sell it for thirty. You know, it's, it's, it's chaos, the whole, uh, aspect of sale and provision of alcohol at the minute. And it seems that the kids, and you can't stop the shops, you can't, you know, there's this attitude of, okay, well, let's close down that place across the road and then the other place, you can't do that. Um, they're right to sell their alcohol and of course, it's easy for these, these kids, if they're kids or if they're just somebody else that's been banned from a pub or whatever, you'll notice they don't go into pubs because pubs are well controlled now. But what happens is, is that they just get one of their mates to go and buy it. So then they're still carting around the high street. Now, the only solution that I've seen that's worked, um, which did work very well was when we've had this PCS, uh, PC, whatever.
PSPO, yeah.
PSPO. And, um, it did work, but it only worked with Mark Popple.
Yeah.
The local Mark Popple, um, literally going around, incredibly amicable guy for a policeman. You know, well-respected, well-known, local, et cetera. And he could take it off of people, he could take cans off or a bottle off and just tip it down the drain in front of them and they wouldn't do a thing about it.
Yeah.
There'd be a slight argument, but nothing, you know, and he had control of the whole situation on his own, more or less.
Thank you.
All right, so we need to either start thinking about maybe even employing a couple of security guys or whatever on a full-time basis, I'm afraid, afraid to say. It's the only, I can't see any other solution.
Councillor Manning.
Quite a few things. Um, first of all, the PSPO was not an alcohol ban.
No.
The PSPO gave the police the powers to ask for somebody to hand over that alcohol, but they could refuse. I was at the meeting Steve mentioned where Seradite was and I expressed my frustration at that meeting, that the only difference between the PSPO that's proposed, the PSPO that we had, was that the first one was in the name of Mendip District Council and the new one is the name, in the name of Somerset District Council. Despite that being the only change, this has now got to go out to consultation.
Yeah.
And it seems absolutely crazy that it just can't be implemented, because it's, it, it isn't an alcohol ban, but it's a step in the, towards that. The other problem, as, as Councillor Cook suggested, was the, the fact that alcohol is on sale in the town. And I think there's some difficult choices. Like, you know, my, my view is that I feel that there should be a restriction on the sale of alcohol, say before midday. That would go a long way to actually solving a lot of the problems, because we won't be having the people getting tanks up and causing all the problems. So it, it is a really difficult situation, but the, the PSPO is definitely the way to, to go.
The police are working on it, thank you. Councillor Lock of Bandu and then we'll move on from this.
So we do seem unusually united on this issue.
Yeah.
I'd like to suggest an outcome of the meeting as we write again to Somerset Council, including our county councillors, Mrs. Hart, just urging them to get on with it. And if possible, asking for timeline of what we could expect reasonably.
Is there a second for that? Put as an action?
If you would like to write a letter as the mayor, you are very welcome to. But it's not an agenda item for decision this evening, so it doesn't need to propose a second round of vote, but you are free to write a letter if you wish.
Thank you.
Councillors can also communicate with county councillors without it being a, a decision of the council.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the next one is, uh, to approve the schedule of payments.
Thank you, your worship. I had a few queries from councillor Roney Dougal, which I was unable to answer. And sadly, unusually, our responsible finance officer is away for two weeks, so I will have to be able to, I have to give a full response when the responsible finance officer is back. But it was circulated in advance of the meeting and I didn't have any other queries from other councillors. Happy to try and answer questions.
Councillor Napper.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, a couple of things. What is the felted pay?
Could you give me a number, please, councillor Napper? It's in the left-hand column. Five nine six zero. That is stock for the information centre downstairs, so that's a supplier.
Thank you. And I noticed that five nine eight two, um, eight hundred and sixty-two pounds for a new ride-on lawnmower. Is that because we've had to take on stuff from the county council?
That's, that's a combination of things actually, councillor Napper, so it should be a bit more descriptive really on here. So that is a change in our insurance for the lawnmower and the vans that the town council uses, because we have two new members of staff who are under the age of twenty-five and were not insured on our vans and our equipment. So we had to change the insurance. We would have had to have changed that anyway, because we had two vans before we took on responsibilities from Somerset Council. But some of it for the lawnmower, yes, probably would have been, but it's because we've got two young whippersnappers who were too young to, to, to drive the vehicles.
How delightful.
Absolutely. They're, they are a breath of fresh air, councillor Napper.
I have another one, your, your worship. Six O two O, the cemetery chapel, um, is that used at all?
Yes.
So there's two chapels at the cemetery, councillor Napper. So one of them is used by us as a workshop and storage space, so that's why we pay the, the business rates on that one, because we use it. And the other chapel is used for funeral services, so yes, both of them are used.
How many times do we use it for funeral services?
Uh, off the top of my head, councillor Napper, because I don't administer the joint burial committee, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but if you'd like to email in, I can get Jackie to give you an answer. But it's the Glaston, well, it's not the Glastonbury, Sharpe's Valley, all right.
Beverage chartered for structural assessments relating to solar, solar panel planning application. So presumably that's down Portchester Road.
No, councillor Napper, that is for solar panels on the town hall. That's part of the planning application that we're putting together.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Manning.
Yes, further to the questions raised by Serena. I was disappointed to learn that the deputy mayor's robes have been eaten by moths.
No, that was the old one.
Well, what I'm wondering is whether we should be investing in mothballs, so that we don't have to.
And also, we probably shouldn't have robes that are probably more than twenty years old, probably actually part of the problem. It was a combination of moth-eaten but also just generally threatened. The, the council had had them for so long, um, they were just due for replacement.
Councillor Cousins.
Worship, I think the robes in question are in that painting there.
Yeah. Councillor Lock of Andy.
I apologise for not writing this in advance. I've got a question about five nine eight seven, design service for planning application for town hall, small hall.
Yes.
I just haven't been aware of us planning any changes to small halls.
So that is for the listed building consent, for turning the small hall into an office that the Property and Assets Committee agreed a little while back. So because obviously we are both blessed and cursed with such a fine grade-two star listed building, there's hoops that we have to jump through that you wouldn't otherwise. And one of the things that would need to happen is for a change to the windows on the frontage on the ground floor. Um, and that is for work, putting together a, a piece of work for pre-application advice and then a planning application to the conservation officers liking or not, um, for changing those. So it's, it's work going toward that.
Okay. Councillor Napper?
On the next page, um, I see that the legal cost.
That's the next item.
Okay, I'll come back to that.
Yeah. Right, we've signed that one for you, thank you.
Uh, did you ask the council if I, I will suffice?
Will you agree that the schedule of payments is a true record?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you. Yes, we did. Okay, budget monitoring report, this rather lengthy document.
Again, I had a couple of queries in advance from councillor Roney Dougal that also stumped me, which is very rare, so, um, I'm really on the back foot at the moment. Haven't had any other queries in advance of the meeting, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Napper?
Nice to your worship. Number one.
Yes. Yes, that's correct. I did check to date.
And that is because the release and bailiffs didn't turn up presumably.
That is, that, that is the cost of the enforcement action after the council was granted a possession order at the county court. That was the cost of enforcing that possession order.
And I couldn't find the, where the costs of the Lego blocks, place it comma more. Uh, how much was that cost? I, I couldn't find it in the, in the text.
Uh, it's on page seven. Item four one three O, I believe.
Katie, who placed the order for those, I don't suppose you remember off the top of your head how much they were, that one was?
Six ninety.
Yes, probably, by the time that you bought the block and it got brought here.
Six hundred and ninety. Page seven and it's.
Page seven, it's note eight.
Yeah. Item four one three O. Okay.
Yes, if you look at the notes, it's explained there.
Councillor Napper, it's up on the screen, I've highlighted it.
Four one three, I'm six, sorry, sorry, I was looking for.
And then.
Yeah. Thank you. Councillor John Francesco.
Um, can I ask, please, when the enforcement officers came to that land, was that when there were only two people there? A pregnant woman and a woman with a broken leg? Or was there any more there? What, when was the seventeen thousand pounds eviction happening? Was that at that fiction?
I wasn't here when it happened, I believe there were more people on it than just two. But the cost of having bailiffs attend site, uh, I'm in the wrong job.
I think that's, uh, spending seventeen and then the rest of it when we're actually, we're supposed to be looking at land to house these people and these people are actually some of the more peaceful ones, yet allowing, um, what's at the moment, which are, yeah, drug-addled, these guys are at least, they're, they're not the worst of them.
The only comment I'll make, your worship, the council was granted a possession order.
Yes.
Field was not vacated by persons who were on the field. And the council had agreed that it, it was to gain a possession order and, and have people leave the field. have people leave the field. And that unfortunately is the cost.
Yeah.
It is not a cheap business.
Councillor Cook.
Thank you. Yeah, there were seventeen at last count bands on that pitch. And five traps and all sorts of things.
Right to reply.
Right to reply. Thank you. They did actually agree to leave.
Yeah.
Yeah, they agreed to leave.
But they hadn't left councillor Don Francesco, so we were carrying out the instruction of the council to regain that piece of land. I really wish we didn't have to spend seventeen thousand pounds. And if you would like to see a copy of the invoice to see the costs associated, I'm sure you can come in and see a copy of the invoice.
Councillor Cousins.
Your worship, just wondered which budget the seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-four pounds came from.
That came from the administration budget for legal expenses, or legal advice as it's termed, came out of here.
Yeah. Councillor Napa.
Thanks, your worship. I'm not too worried about which budget it comes from. What I'm concerned about is how much it's costing Glastonbury Town Council.
Absolutely.
And I just think that that is what the caravans and the travellers are costing us in an awful amount of money. Plus the fact we have been told that to remove some of the caravans, it costs about four thousand pounds. Not to us, but to the Somerset Council. So surely it's in our interest and Somerset Council to try and prohibit some of these caravans. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Cousins.
As I completely understand councillor Napa's point of view, we don't say these things when the people who are upsetting the town who live in houses are found out to be drug dealing rapists, do we? We actually just go, oh, we don't point out that they should be evicted or any of these sorts of things. But it does seem rather strange to always refer back to the fact that people live in non-bricks-in-mortar houses.
Councillor Manning.
I think it's unfortunate the council had to spend this money. You know, I wish we didn't have to spend this money. If we hadn't spent this money, if those people had not occupied the site in the first place, that seventeen thousand pound could be spent on something far more positive to, you know, towards providing a real solution towards the problems that this town is facing.
Thank you. Okay. Do I need this to be repaid or was it just noted?
It's just for noting, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Next item is an update on asset and service devolution from Somerset Council.
I haven't particularly got an update of any substance, your worship, because I am still waiting for Somerset Council's legal team to progress things from their side. I have been sent documents for a lot of the lands that we are to be transferred. And I'm due to have a meeting with a Somerset Council officer from the assets department to go over those and the heads of terms for the transfer to us. I'm pretty sure off the top of my head, I've booked that meeting with that officer, but I can't remember when it is.
Okay.
But it is progressing, albeit at Somerset Council's speed.
Okay, thank you. And then an update on St Dunstan's House. Bless us.
Yeah, so the formal opening is happening on the 10th of October. That is, councillors are obviously invited. The guest list has gotten to about a hundred and fifty people. And that is people locally who have in some form contributed, not necessarily financially, but some financially to the project. The team that have delivered it and some other stakeholders who will end up coming in to use the facility. So the formal opening for those who have been invited will continue to be on the 10th of October. I had a very interesting discussion with yourself and members of the design team about the legal status of what essentially is a site visit for a hundred and fifty people. So everyone's going to be under strict instructions, do not touch anything. And then the plan is that the building will be handed back to us, hopefully a couple of weeks after that formal opening. Although we are pushing to have the building back as soon as possible. But the joy of an old building where nothing's quite square and nothing's quite as you expected, things are taking a bit of time. But pleased with progress. I've been putting out updates on the town council's Facebook page. The flooring is going down in the atrium and it's looking really, really good. The glazing is going into the atrium. The angled sections of glazing had to be measured on site, so that's why there's some plywood up at the moment. But the front and the back will be completely glazed when that glazing arrives on site. And it does continue to progress well despite the weather's best efforts to stop work. And anyone who's viewed these sites from the car park recently will see that the balcony is taking shape. So the scaffolding will soon come down there and we'll have a lovely new balcony on the south-facing aspect of St Dunstan's House as well. So yeah, progressing well, your worship, and looking forward to the opening event on the 10th of October.
Thank you. To consider a recommendation. So this came from Finance and General Purposes Committee to adopt a new set of financial regulations.
So, your worship, this was discussed at the July meeting of Finance and General Purposes and it was deferred from the last full council meeting, although it was on the agenda because I unfortunately was unwell. The reason that we are looking to adopt a new set of financial regulations is that there's a new national model set of financial regulations. And it makes it much simpler for those using them to understand what procedures and hoops, for want of a better expression, that the town council needs to jump through. So I won't take you through it in detail because it is relatively lengthy. But the Finance and General Purposes Committee decided the different thresholds of what can be spent by whom and with what permission and oversight. Happy to try and answer any questions, but it was circulated in advance. And it's a recommendation from the committee to adopt it. So hopefully the council will adopt these as you're the only body who can adopt a set of financial regulations.
Thank you. Councillor Cousins.
Your worship, I propose that we adopt the financial regulations as recommended by Finance and General Purposes. I'm looking for a second.
Thank you. Councillor Henderson, second.
Move to vote.
All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, councillors. The next item is another financial one, to approve the council's pension discretion policy. So again, this is the town clerk to explain what this is all about.
Thank you, worship. Periodically, our pension provider asks us to adopt a pension discretion policy. Now, I'm not proposing any changes to the existing pension discretion policy. And if there are any members who wish to have a flip through it on paper, because it's not the easiest document to understand. There are five copies there amongst yourselves if you want them.
Yeah.
I can quickly scroll through it, your worship. It is better reviewed, probably not in a full council meeting because it might take some time to understand and look at legal references. But there is no change from what is policy. And I don't believe that Glastonbury Town Council's pension discretion policy is... I'm not saying you're not generous, I'm just saying it pretty much says that any discretionary things the staffing committee will consider on a case-by-case basis and generally only grant in exceptional circumstances.
Okay.
But as it's a re-adoption of an existing policy, I'm hoping the council will be happy to adopt it.
Councillor Henderson.
I propose that we adopt the pension discretionary document.
Is there a second there? Councillor Oaken, second it. All those in favour of adopting it? Unanimous again, thank you. Thank you, councillors. Okay. To set the date for the first meeting of the roadside dwelling working group. Now, we agreed to set this up. We can't remember who's actually on it, but we have to.
I can, your worship.
Oh, can you? Thank you. It was me, deputy mayor.
Because Katie very kindly went back through the minutes and found out who agreed to be on it. So it's going to be comprised of councillors, Locka Bandu, yourself, your worship, the deputy mayor councillor Price, councillor Manning, councillor Napa, councillor Henderson, councillor Oaken. And of course, because it is a working party, it is delightfully flexible. And if that group, I would suggest probably after the first meeting where you can all have a discussion about it, would like to invite others to be part of that discussion. Or indeed if other councillors want to join that, because it's a working party, it's very flexible. So would be quite keen to set a date for that working group and to start discussions on how the town council could contribute to improving local facilities for those who might currently dwell by the roadside.
Thank you. Councillor Napa.
Thank you, worship. I just hope that I'm bringing this up at the right time. I pass a couple of caravans in the morning every day, about five times a day. And they're bringing up youngsters in these caravans. And on this caravan, on the door, great big letters, F U C K and all that kind of thing. I think it's absolutely abysmal that we've got to look at that kind of thing. And it is a shambles where they are. And I won't say where they are at the moment, but I pass them every time.
Okay. We can deal with those sort of things in that group. Yeah. So and then widen it to wherever it goes. Councillor Cousins.
I agree with councillor Napa. It's absolutely outrageous that the person who wrote those things on the sides of those vans, because they didn't like the people who lived in the vans, and were very probably people who live in a house themselves, should get away with it.
Thank you. So do we have any proposed dates that might work for the first meeting of that group? Councillor, deputy mayor.
I propose Tuesday, the 23rd of September in the evening, if other councils are available.
There is already in this room booked a river pollution working group meeting. Unfortunately, that date is not available.
Would the Thursday, oh no, Thursday's not any good, is it?
The Monday of that week.
Twenty ninth.
The twenty second.
You've got things then, haven't you? Yeah.
Yeah, is that Tuesday, the 30th?
Yeah, that would work. Is the chamber free?
It appears to be free, yes.
Okay. Tuesday, the 30th of September, does that work?
Seven o'clock.
Seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, did you say seven o'clock?
Yeah, does that work? Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Oh, yeah.
Have we got any terms of reference drafted up for that?
Nothing. No, it is a working group, so I think we can pretty much decide who we want to invite. So there've been discussions about for a future meeting, gypsy liaison officer, roadside dwelling, roadside housing officer, those sort of people. And the next one is, ah, this is me. An update on this Sunday, I hope you're all going to come. The Wellbeing and Wonder event. So Melissa sent me this and asked me to read it. There are some blue leaflets over on the windowsill, over there on the way to the door, with the timetables on it. So residents of Glastonbury and the surrounding areas are invited to attend this unique and uplifting community event, Wellbeing and Wonder, taking place on Sunday, the 14th of September, from 11am till 5pm. Organised by Glastonbury Town Council, the event is free to attend and promises a full day of practical support with engaging talks, inspiring activities and meaningful community connection. The event brings together local organisations and expert speakers, offering practical advice and inspiration across themes such as resilience, creativity, nature and mental wellbeing. The programme kicks off with a welcome by me, followed by MP Sarah Dyke. Attendees can choose from a variety of sessions throughout the day, including energy and money-saving tips, local emergency preparedness, how nature supports mental health, creative practices for joy and healing, topics around birth, loss and mental wellbeing. The event reflects Glastonbury Town Council's continued commitment to nurturing a resilient and compassionate community and offers something for all ages and interests. Admission is free, open to everyone, whether people stay for the full day or just pop in for a session or two, that's all fine. There will be some councillors who've already offered to man us all. So from 11 till 12 councillor Don Francesco, myself and councillor Locka Bandu. 12 till 1, councillor Don Francesco, Locka Bandu Ian Much. 1 till 2 councillor Cousins. 2 till 3 councillor Oaken, John Cousins. 3 to 4 Zoe Price, Margaret Oaken, John Cousins. And 4 to 5 Zoe Price, and I'll probably be around as well. Thank you. So please feel free to come, invite your neighbours. And the opening will be down in the main hall. I'll speak at about quarter past 11. And then Sarah Dyke will follow. And then there'll be talks and things up here as well. But there's a programme on that little blue leaflet. Thank you. All good. Okay, next one, very exciting, calendar of meetings. This got postponed from last council because of councillor Cottrell. So we just moved it to this one. Thank you.
So all it is, your worship, I've tried to schedule a number of committees for which meeting scheduled in advance has worked. There were a number of committees for whom it didn't work, so I've taken them off of the calendar. And I've put them, well, because it gave me the option to, all the way to the end of 2027. Now, that doesn't mean that meetings can't be moved. For instance, later on, I'm going to ask the council if you would consider moving a property and assets meeting because something has cropped up. So they're not necessarily set in stone, but it does give councillors and us in the office an idea of when these sort of larger committees are planning to meet. So if the council could adopt this, then we'll get it shared electronically and hopefully at the next, well, not hopefully, but at the next meeting, we'll have a printed copy so you can all put it on your fridge.
Thank you. Yes, I have one here. Who was first? Councillor Ossman.
The colours are not terribly clear to me, but it did look like the town meeting in 27 was going to be on the 1st of April. And I wasn't sure if that was a particularly auspicious date.
Well, maybe it'll be, yes, all fools, of course, lord of misrule, no doubt.
I was trying to get a regular interval, a bit like full council is, the second Tuesday. I thought the first Thursday in April would function well for the annual town meeting. I didn't consider April Fool's Day when I made the box red.
Thank you. And well spotted.
Maybe you might quite enjoy it on April Fool's Day.
Thank you. Councillor Cousins.
Okay, I feel that all the dates are appropriate and would move that we adopt these dates. Thank you.
Councillor Manning then, councillor Napa.
I think it's great that we've got this, really good. What would be really helpful though, was rather than all the councillors having to put it in their own calendars, that there were calendar invites sent out.
Yes, I have asked those that clerk committees to do that.
It will become dynamic then.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Councillor Napa.
Thank you, worship. I hope that I'm telling this in the right place. But I think that we ought to also take a note of tour fair day. Because yesterday, we didn't have a tour fair day. After nearly 900 years of a chartered tour, a chartered fair, we didn't really have one. And there was a lot of people disappointed. Thank you.
Wow. Councillor Henderson.
Well, I agree with Terry to a certain extent, but perhaps if we brought it up at the last meeting, we could have organised something, Terry. It's not something that just happens on its own, you know, if a councillor brings it up, then the clerk can arrange something and we can do something better.
I wasn't aware of it at the last meeting.
Councillor Cousins.
Worship, I think part of the issue around tour fair may be that normally the vicar is very good at reminding the mayor. And we don't have a vicar at the moment. And perhaps we should make sure that the chipfields have our email address so that they can, or phone numbers, they can contact us. So I would like to propose that we adopt these dates. I'm looking for a second.
Thank you. Councillor Henderson, yeah, you second it? Councillor Smith? Yeah. And all those in favour of adopting this calendar of meetings? And unanimous again. Thank you, councillors. Resolutions of delegated. Resolutions of delegated committees.
Put these on the projector, your worship, they are only for noting.
Okay, thank you.
that's because of the backlog at Somerset Council. They are refusing any extensions of time for town and parish councils to have their say. So thank you to the planning committee for meeting twice.
Yeah. councillor Cousins?
At the extraordinary meeting of the planning committee, there was to look at the garage by Tesco. We recommended to accept that the garage turns its lights off, as Tesco does. At the time, we said 12 midnight, but I note that Tesco's turns their lights off at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Can I consider those noted, your worship?
Yes, thank you. Updates from advisory committees? And consider any recommendations for decision?
Very short report this one, your worship, there was one meeting, no recommendations.
Oh, perfect, thank you. So that's noted, sorted. Unitary councillor reports?
I've had, we've had apologies from councillor Hart. She has provided me, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, a written update, which I will circulate after this meeting.
Thank you.
Something from councillor Hart about, apparently there was an emergency HR meeting at Taunton, and you'll be glad to know that the top echelons of the apparatchiks there were awarded a pay rise of 3.2% after a 20 minute HR meeting.
Wow.
Only for the very top layer.
Thank you for that. councillor Smith?
Yeah, in the absence of county councillor, I'd like this question to be minuted, which would send, that is with regard to the A361, since September 24, the A361 committee received correspondence from highways to say that they would remove the centre line between Coursing Bench and Wellhouse Lane, and also refurbish the road markings and improve warning signs. None of that has been done. We'd like to ask the county councillor when it's going to be done.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know whether we can minute the question.
Katie's done it, thank you. Who was first?
John.
councillor Cousins?
I would have liked to have the opportunity to ask our county councillor if anybody had noticed where the traffic goes when the road is closed between the sort of roundabout over here, down Chilwell Street and beyond. Because if they did take note of where the traffic goes, they could quite easily then replace the freight route with a 7.5 ton weight limit that would cost two signs, one at Canard's Grave and one at the roundabout down here near BNQ. And we could carry on without the heavy traffic coming through the town. And it would seem to me a great waste of not monitoring where that traffic goes, because that was where it would go anyway if we had a 7.5 ton weight limit.
Thank you. councillor Napper?
Thank you, worship. I totally disagree with that, because it makes another, I think it is five miles difference. So therefore, we're paying a lot more in fuel and we're making a lot of, a lot more CO2s in the atmosphere. So therefore, I disagree with that totally.
Thank you. right reply?
Thank you. I don't believe that we're paying anything, but I do understand that some people are very concerned about the fate of the quarry lorries and seem to put the quarry lorries before the residents of Glastonbury.
Thank you. councillor Henderson?
Looks like our long hot summer is coming to an end, and obviously over the past few days, we've had some torrential rain, and it was always this time of year when I tackle councillor Cockle about the gully clearance in this area. It's an ongoing problem and it is quite sort of taken light heartily, but it's a serious problem, because with some of the deluges we've had lately, which obviously are going to be the norm, the water's got to go somewhere. And at the moment, our drains are sadly blocked after years of neglect. So I would like to ask a letter to be written to councillor Hart, or to anybody at Somerset Council.
Thank you.
Who can help us in our plight.
Yes, I did just notice at the weekend that the puddle by the abbess kitchen gate was flowing again, and that about 10 million acorns have fallen off the tree and are all sort of lying there. And I thought, ah, some pigs in the high street would sort of do wonders for those things. Yeah. councillor Napper?
In answer to that last question, I note that this afternoon, the environment agency was doing something to the mill stream. So hopefully, something will be, will be happening. I'm not too sure how much is going to be done, but that they were down working on the mill stream.
Thank you. councillor Oaken?
Just like, if we could write a note to councillor Hart regarding the traffic on the 361, because the roadworks have caused enormous problems. Where I live in Cinnamon Lane, Cinnamon Lane is less than six feet across, and we've had HGV lorries thundering down there at around about 20 to 30 miles an hour. There are children on that lane, it's kids, the kids playground is at the bottom, it's been children's holiday time. There are kids on ponies walking up and down the lane frequently. And also, the size of the lorries, the HGVs are so enormous. One was 20 foot long, trying to get down less than a six mile, six foot wide lane. And literally three or four minutes after he'd gone past, three children on ponies came round the corner. If they had actually met each other, there would have been carnage. I spoke to Somerset County Council Highways Authority, and the answer I got was, well, if people get run over, it's their own fault. I find that disgusting.
Should have taken a name, Margaret.
Well, it was, it was a gentleman called Mr Fry.
There you go.
But yes, we've also put in a complaint, but total abdication of responsibility. I went up and spoke to the contractors, they actually said, we're not sending the HGVs down there. I said, then how come they're going down there? Because they're pretty big, you can't miss them. And he said, they just bulldozed their way past us. And so they did put, the contractors put out more signs, and it did diminish the HGVs, but then we got traffic travelling down there. That isn't too much of a problem, but they were travelling at quite high speeds. There's blind, if you know Cinnamon Lane, there are parts of it that are actually less than six feet wide, and it's a well-used walking lane for children, dog walkers, ponies. So it was a real health and safety issue. And I think next time, if anything's done at Egley Road, we need better signage.
Thank you. Anything from lead councillors to outside bodies? councillor Manning?
Busy month ahead for Glastonbury, sorry, I should say, street and Glastonbury Chamber of Commerce. I'm fresh from a networking breakfast at the Crown this morning, but we've also got a networking event at the Abbey on the 23rd of Sept, 20, sorry, it's too small, 25th of September. I can't read it, it's too small.
We've lost another word.
Sorry, 23rd of September, at the Abbey Yard. On the 2nd of October, we've got a jobs fair here at the, well, not here, but downstairs at the town hall.
What was the date of the jobs fair?
2nd of October, that's from 10 till 1:30. And then on the 10th of October, we've got the R E G M and a networking event, another one with guest speaker Sarah Dyke.
Thank you. councillor Napper?
Thank you, your worship. Apologies, I missed the carnival meeting last week, it was on the 1st, I think. So, yeah, apologies, I missed the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? No. Okay. Right, so a few small announcements. councillor Cockle's funeral is tomorrow, so if you're in the civic party, please be at the town hall by 10 o'clock. The hearse will pause outside about 10 past 10, we'll fall in behind it and then process up to the church. We'll wait for the coffin to be carried in, so we'll get there, wait by the gate, coffin carried in, we'll then follow it and take our seats. And then after...
And after the coffin?
Yeah, yeah. The burial is up at the cemetery, but family only, so they don't want a civic input. And then downstairs in the main hall, we'll have a small wake, some food and people saying things down there. So timing for that is sort of more flexible. Pilgrimage is, the deputy mayor and I attended both the Anglican and the Catholic pilgrimages this weekend just gone, and they were most appreciative of us being there. So it really was very, very nice. So, yeah, and so a very, very good sort of public awareness event. councillor Napper?
Thank you, worship. Why has it been changed from midsummer? Because it was always sort of June, July time, and it would have been a better, it would have been a better time for them, because, by golly, did it ever rain on Sunday?
Thank you. councillor Osborne?
Changed because the, they wanted to put it as close as possible to the feast day of Our Lady of Glastonbury, which is today.
Oh, okay.
Or both. Sorry, yesterday, yeah. It's the same.
Yeah. Okay. But one thing that did happen, when we were processing down the high street with the speaker vans in front of us, one of the commentators did say, and thank you to our civic authority for governing our town so well. Went, thank you very much.
There were prayers for this.
Yeah, 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 there was. No, it was excellent. For those of you who care about Cornwall, Colonel, there is a petition going through central government on gov.uk saying, we would like Cornwall to be an independent nation. So if there's 100,000 signatures, it will be debated in Parliament. councillor Cousins?
Surely this is time to bring up Brexit?
Yes. Okay, so what else have we got? So councillor Cockle's funeral tomorrow. This Saturday, in here, at 6 o'clock, is a presentation to our previous town crier. So that's here. I understand that's also the night in the abbey, so, but yeah, in here at 6 o'clock. councillor Cousins?
What did you say?
Six?
Six o'clock, for David.
For David, yeah. So, yeah, in this one, there's an event downstairs, apparently.
It does flash with a, with a, an event down at the railway.
Okay. And the night in the abbey.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the date he wanted, as far as I understand, thank you. So you know about resilience and wonder, that, sorry, well-being and wonder, so that's this Sunday. I've already mentioned this, Reverend Alice Watson, so that will be the 18th of September, so that's her installation, so the bishop will come, that's at 7 o'clock in the evening at St John's Church. So the bishop will present her to the flock.
That's midweek, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah. councillor Cousins?
Worship, just wondered, have we been extended an official civic patient?
Yes, yeah, you already have.
What time should we meet and where? Or do we just turn up?
Is there anything happening that evening in here? Or we could, we could meet here, couldn't we?
I suggest that you speak to Scarlett, your worship, and we'll see what we can organise.
Okay, thank you.
I've got seven.
That'll be at the church.
Seven o'clock, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll check with Scarlett, thank you. One other one, the Shoemakers Museum over in Parksville, so in the old manor house and the building next to it, that should have its official opening on the 18th of September. So again, that's next week. Farm Open Days, so that's the Bridy's Regenerative Farm on Portchester Grove, open day 20th and 21st of September, so that's not this weekend, the weekend after. And then St Ben's, the refurbishment of the church starts on the 22nd, and so that will be for about six months.
May, may I, your worship, on the topic of the Shoemakers Museum?
Yeah.
Councillors have been extended an invite, fired me to you guys, to attend the launch party, so it's not on the, it's not on the 18th of September when it opens to the public, that will be on the 2nd of October, 6pm to 8pm. I will, I will forward it round by email.
2nd of October?
Yes. But you've been extended an invite to that evening function.
Thank you. Oh, deputy mayor says tour fair is in town. When does that start? Today already started?
Yes, it is.
Okay, right, thank you. So all week? Yeah, thank you. I think that was everything there. The correspondence, I'll just read out this card. So this is to the town council, thank you all so much for your generous support of Glastonbury Women's Institute. The sum granted to us will be used to help support all our members, to inspire and educate them, and to ensure that the Women's Institute will continue to thrive. With best wishes from all the members of Glastonbury Women's Institute. councillor Henderson?
I remember when the WI came to ask for a grant, and they were struggling with members, et cetera, and I knew somebody that was in the WI, and when I saw her next, I said, oh, sorry to hear about your lack of members. She said, oh no, we're doing great. I said, that's what we're in. And I discovered we've got two women in the institution.
Ah.
One in the daytime and one in the evening.
Wow.
And I think the evening one is doing really well. The other one, I would say the older generation that meet during the day, are not doing so well. But the one that's sort of more working people who meet in the evening is doing pretty good. So maybe at some point, there could be some sort of cross pollination that might help both.
Thank you. Yeah, that was the one that they also sort of said they'd welcome speakers at one of them. So, yeah, okay. Any items for news release or the quarterly newsletter? So just so you don't forget about the next quarterly newsletter. For Sawain, isn't it, I think? councillor Cousins? Then councillor Price?
I'm sure that it's already been into the paper, but I don't know whether it might be worthwhile having the two most recent free people of Glastonbury featured in the newsletter.
Good idea. Is that an offer for you to write something, councillor Cousins?
I don't have much time, but I could certainly get one word, something down, if you wish.
Yes, please, that would be most helpful, thank you. councillor Price?
Deputy mayor? I was just thinking about the parks and about our speaker earlier, Amanda, and I was wondering whether we should put something into our next newsletter about the parks and where we're at with that and how we might be moving that forward. I can't remember if there was something in the last newsletter about that or not.
I don't think there was. No, thank you.
Is there someone from the council who would like to volunteer to put the structure or words of something along those lines together?
If I could liaise with you, Connor, and just get the, because obviously we've taken it on and good notion. If I could liaise with you, Connor, and just get the, because obviously we've taken it on and it'd be good, no sense. I don't mind doing that.
Okay.
What's the deadline like?
Probably if it's going to be a Sawain newsletter.
Yeah, so late October, mid October.
So probably, yeah, it needs to be middle of October, so probably a week after the next full council meeting.
Okay.
Probably the deadline for all of the words, so I can get it designed.
And John, okay.
And obviously, we haven't really fully decided how the process of upgrading the parks will go ahead. Because obviously, there's a, an earmarked amount of money in this year's budget. But kind of needs to come from councillors, what you would like it to say, because all I, all. If I were to write it, all I could really say is what you've currently agreed. But other than putting some money aside this year, we as yet haven't agreed anything.
Okay.
And just to clarify, will that, is, will we be talking about the parks in property and assets or will that be in the services?
Be property and assets, the upgrade of them, yeah.
Okay, we're done with that, thank you. To review actions arising from the meeting.
Thank you, worship, so you've adopted a new set of financial regulations, so obviously we will function according to those. Let me just check item number 11 on the, you've agreed the, or re-adopted the council's pension discretion policy, so I will pass that on to our pension provider that that's been re-adopted. You've set the date for your first meeting of the roadside dwelling working group, so 30th of September at 1900 in this room. You've adopted the calendar of meetings, so we will distribute that, give you a copy and also I will ask everyone in the office to invite councillors via their Outlook calendars for those who use them. And any other actions that just arise from some of the decisions you made tonight. But they are the main ones that I noted down with my trusty green pen, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So I'll, I'll just note the date of the next ordinary meeting of full council, it's the 14th of October. And then I would like to ask the members of the public to leave and we'll go into a confidential session. So I would like a proposal and a second to pass that motion in accordance with the public bodies admissions to meetings, thank you.
I propose that we now go to the session.
Councillor Matt seconded it, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, yeah, thank you. I think Serena's just gone as well. Thank you, that was unanimous.